Would everyone bow their prayer, please?
Father, we come to you tonight and we just thank you for the, for the honor of allowing us and appointing us to, to lead this community, Lord. We just ask that you lay your hand on this council, on this community, and allow us to serve this community with honor and integrity. We ask that you be with all of those that are struggling and with those who are not, Lord, before we all meet you. It's your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I will open the Centerville Town Council meeting for October the 10th, 2023, and at 7:00 PM. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Here.
Josh Tudor.
Here.
Jack Bonneker.
Here.
Gary Holbert.
Here.
Dan Wonders.
Here.
Has everyone gone over the minutes from meeting in September 12th, 2023? Are there any additions, corrections to those? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes from September 12th. So moved. I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jack. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Minutes for the council's work session on September 26th, 2023. Are there any additions or corrections to those? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes from September 26th.
So moved.
I have a motion by David. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Gary. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Approval of the claims. Has anyone gone over the claims? Are there any questions, corrections? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the claims. So moved. I have a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Approval of the billing adjustment of $164.85. I would entertain a motion to approve that billing adjustment.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jack. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion to carry. Approval of the allowance report. I would entertain a motion for that approval.
So moved.
I got a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Josh. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion to carry. We, anything, we got Main Street?
We have one thing to make a decision about, but I also have a couple miscellaneous.
Go ahead with your mission, miscellaneous.
All right. Of course, the eclipse is the top of the priority list right now, and we are getting glasses, eclipse glasses, arriving tomorrow from the Tourism Bureau to be sold this week for the eclipse that's this Saturday. Does everybody know there's a partial eclipse Saturday? Kind of like our trial runs. Then we will have our next Connections meeting on October 23rd, and love to have some of you come. If you haven't heard yet, the Connections meetings are once a quarter, the purpose of which can be said in one word, networking for our business owners. And we have it in a bit different business each time. This time it will be at Lavender and Sage, and it's just, there's no program, there's nothing formal about it. It's just get together and know who each other is so we can go better into the future. And we're already seeing some fruit of that. The business owners are putting together a Shop Small Saturday event, so more to come about that. Just I mentioned that we are soon going to have a new Main Street website, thanks to First Bank, who gives us funding every year for tech projects. And Ed Delapaz, you all know him, is building a new website for us, which will work the same way that all of his other, you know, he does the Depot District, he does the UEA, he does Richmond Main Street, et cetera. So they're all going to be uniform, consistent, build our county cohesiveness is what we're trying to do. And the Main Street website we've had for Centerville was in a, the goal of it was to promote our organization. That's really secondary. The goal of the new Main Street website will be to promote our businesses. That's what we're about. That's the good news. I did have one question. Any sign of the impa sign being replaced, the one that was taken out when the young man had an accident in front of the library? Do we know the status of that?
We're waiting on the settlement from the insurance company.
Oh, it's in that too, same as the library sign.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, we've already got, you know, got the prices a long time ago and went through with just insurance.
Yeah, okay.
So. What's your glasses going to cost?
We're selling them for $2, and they'll be for sale over the county. The Tourism Bureau obtained them, and that's a little bit of profit for our Main Street group, which we will use for expenses for the eclipse.
And they can start getting them after tomorrow at the library?
Uh, I think, I think so. There's a whole list of businesses.
All the businesses, all the businesses in Centerville. There's like eight or nine that's going to have them.
Okay.
Yeah, most of the ones we think to go to will have them, yeah. Like Turn Insurance and the First, First Bank and all.
Don't drive with them on, Gary. Wouldn't think of it.
Try to go beaver hunting with, wearing them.
Thank you.
On the Main Street, on the park project and the painting design, Melissa Vance called me yesterday and talked with me. I told her, you know, where we were kind of at on, you know, questions that we had that we discussed at the work session. Were you able to get any prices?
She hasn't gotten with me yet.
Hasn't gotten with you. She asked, because of the timeframe, they have to spend this money by the end of December. And if she wanted to know as quickly as we possibly could, if we are even interested in doing that project, because if we're not, then they were going to use it somewhere else and then come back when they get another round, you know, with a project, you know, for us. So I told, I would try to get her, excuse me, an answer here as quickly as possible. Hoping we had some information on costs, but.
What do you mean, cost? Because they're paying for it.
No, we got cameras, lighting down in that block. I explained to her about, you know, we had concerns when people rent the park and having it up there in that section, then that may interfere with people who are having a family reunion or a birthday party or whatever when they rent the park. So if we went to First Street down to Fourth Street, then we, what some of the concerns there were, there's no lighting down there, and then obviously we don't have any cameras down that far for vandalism and stuff, which we've had some. So we were trying to get across, you know, that town to put some lights down there along with cameras. That, that was the two biggest concerns that we've had. So, because somebody goes down there and takes other spray paint or paint, paints it, we never know who, who did it. And then now we got to paint all the asphalt to go back and paint that again because, you know, that paint didn't come off the asphalt. So that, that's why we were looking into putting cameras down there and then also having lighting down there because we don't have it down that far. And.
And the reasoning not putting it by the, the shelter and down through the park was for certain reasons, like renting it out or, or festival, you know, archway day festival.
You know, because when we looked at it, the, you know, Patty's Run separates the playground from the other area, and so people have their, you know, birthday parties, graduation parties, other stuff down there. They pay money to rent the park, rent that area. And then if you got a bunch of kids down there at that time wanting to do that, that interferes with them over there. I remember one year we was, we were actually having, you know, a graduation party for one of the grandkids, and we had some kids come and take food. So.
Wow.
I mean, that's, so that's what we were looking at, you know, not putting it from First to Morton and moving it down so we don't run into a conflict there. That was one of the major concerns. And then when we got looking at moving it down there, like I said, it's dark down there in the evening, especially like right now, and we needed to put some cameras down there in case there is some vandalism.
Well, we're going to have to do some juggling because the, you're probably talking about four poles at the minimum, four lights at a grand apiece or thereabouts, plus the wire, plus the installation of the cameras on the poles.
So that was something that concerned me.
Well, I hope it, I, when we went into this, we didn't think it was complicated at all. So it's kind of disappointing that we can't just act on it.
Right. But we've had issues already, so that's why we're trying not to have any more issues with graffiti and stuff. So.
And just, just to clarify for me, that, that cost would be paid for the, by the city for the lighting?
Correct.
Cameras and stuff.
Yeah.
That's not a cost.
Not coming out of them.
We anticipate to pass along.
Their cost was just the painting and the stenciling.
And that benefits also the safety of that for people that are walking and other things that are going on down there, you know. Cameras other places in town have benefited certain investigations and stuff, so that would benefit the towns. So that, that's one of the reasons that none of us had a qual in doing that. And unfortunately, we, I don't know how the rest of us feel, but myself, I hate to impose on either the project or the people that are trying to rent or use that area at dedicated times for just them and make either person feel like they can't be there. So that was our option. We were, that had been brought up and we were looking at.
So, but I do need to get her an answer if we think we want to, want to try to move forward on this or not because if not, then she wants to use that grant money elsewhere this time on this round and then come back with another project later.
I, in my opinion, I think, I'd love to have it, don't get me wrong. And I, I think we ought to, we ought to wait till the next time so we can get our ducks in a row with the funding of the wires and the poles and the lights and, because it's going to be an undertaking.
If we'd known a little sooner, we could have done some, I think, a little more planning and to get that, all that stuff in place.
And we certainly don't want to utilize funds for, that could be used somewhere else.
But I don't want them to lose it.
Yeah, we have lots of grants. Lose the money.
So will you be getting with Melissa or should I?
I told her I would call her back.
Okay.
You know, tomorrow, so.
So it's not, let me be sure I understand. You're not saying no, you're saying not now?
Correct. I don't think, you know, because we, just like I don't have a cost, I'm trying to get a cost. Can I get this, that in place? Because she said this has to be done by end of December. Don't.
We don't even have the lights to begin with.
I don't, I don't think there's any change in how we feel about it. We're all, we're all for the project going through.
The timeframe with that grant.
We just want to make sure that we're not wasting any of your grant money and it's, it's done, done safely. The last thing I'd want to do is go ahead and do the project, and then we go put in poles and something and have to modify something you've already done to spend grant money on. You're just making sure, we all still want it, my understanding, and that hasn't changed at all. We're, we're excited for the project. It's just trying to make sure it's done in the correct order.
All right. Well, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Somebody here from the railroad?
No.
The Amendment on Ordinance Code 98-11, rank weed vegetation. Still working on that. Okay. You carry that forward? Yep. We have the introduction for ordinance 23, 2023-09. To introduce this, this is the ordinance for the additional appropriation to Centerville. If you will put that for first reading. At work. Police Department. Everybody got my. I think I, I think I got it. Okay. I know Dan, you were just talking about graffiti. That was one of the topics I wanted to discuss. Make you all aware, we've had numerous acts of vandalism in town. It kind of started some time ago. That always takes place, it seems like, underneath the bridge down here on North Morton. They've always kind of hit graffiti down there. But this spread starting on, it was the night of October 24th through the morning, early morning of Sunday, the 25th. We've had a couple of young men that were out spraying, painting, graffiti on houses, businesses, dumpsters, UPS trucks, and we're into the felony stages. So I do have several leads and I do have several videos on them. So if anybody knows anything, and I would suggest that the suspects kind of turn themselves into me and make it easier on themselves, because I am going to track them down. And that is one of our concerns that's going on down the park. We try to keep an eye on that. And I have utilized the town surveillance cameras, as you all know, on several criminal investigations, this being one of them. So we're well on our way for suspects on that. But obviously, if anybody has any information to reference that, please contact the police department. We appreciate it. Just a reminder, we're having our holiday food drive this Saturday. We're kind of doing a little bit earlier this year. We were hoping for a little bit better weather, but it sounds like Saturday's going to be kind of a, maybe rain and cold day. I'm not sure. But we're doing that from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, like we normally do. But we'll be accepting monetary donations as well as canned food or anything that people want to drop off that we can use for the holiday food drive this year, which we do on Thanksgiving and Christmas, as you know. The Fire Department is going to be doing a fill the boot campaign as well, same time as we're at Main and Morton. So anybody wants to come out and help that, you're welcome to join us. We usually have a pretty good time. Other than that, I don't really have anything else. Okay. Kevin?
Well, I'm trying to get the auction set up for November 1st at 11:00 AM at the PD. All I need is council's permission to sign the contract with the auctioneer to get the ball rolling on this.
Okay, I would entertain a motion on Kevin's request.
So moved.
I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Oh, second. What's the date on that?
I have a second by Josh.
The date again?
November 1st. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And we're having some issues with the Ford Post Hoist out at the garage, and I have given each a copy of the quote for $15,402.36 for the 26. Our present one is getting to the place where it's unsafe. Given that all the utilities, as well as Fire Department and PD have vehicles using that, I'm going to ask that we take that money out of the.
Might add, that was a used one whenever we put it in, and it is getting dangerous. So I would entertain a motion on that request. So moved. I have a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you for that. Our first new truck has arrived. It's out at the PD, being outfitted now and hopefully be in service by the end of the month. And that's basically all I got under general unless you have anything for me.
You got anything?
All right. So last month we did 23 permits, bringing in a total of $454. And also last month, we did 26 code enforcements with, and three of them we took, did with enforcement. Couple of them were abandoned vehicles and one was, one was tall grass, so direct weeds and vegetations. Also, I do have one more thing I would like to bring up. I would like to thank the town for letting me take a class back in August. And with that being said, I did get my certification to become a certified fire inspector one.
Please. Okay, the other thing we have is, Dave's not here.
No, he's not.
Okay. He, Mike Dave from the Centerville Junior High School is asking permission to have the turkey chase on Saturday, November the 18th, 2023 at 1:00 PM. Of course, he needs assistance with the flow of traffic, and the route would be the same as last year.
Which goes south Centerville Road to Ruby, over to Mattie Harrison, and back up to in-town progress school street.
Any, any issues?
Yeah, we should go take care.
Dennis? I would entertain a motion then to allow the turkey chase on Saturday, November the 18th. Make that motion. Got a motion by David. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Jack. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bonneker.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Wonders.
Aye.
Motion carried. I put in all of these packet, which come to my attention last week, sadly, that, you know, for your information, that Wayne County is ranked 87th out of the 92 counties. And what they consider the county health is poor. And so I put all that with the statistics. One of the things also that I wanted to note, and this only went to, this was for 2023, and then they did the annual population estimate for Indiana townships by county. And, but this only carries through 21. They haven't established, but Wayne Township lost 31, Center Township gained 25. Everybody else was just one or two minus or plus out of all the townships in Wayne County. So I bring that to your attention because there's a lot of movement and our county's not in the greatest shape. So, just for your information. Street Department?
Well, as many of you know, our 2022 Two Community Crossings paving project has been completed. The men's been paved and striped. We've secured 100 tons of salt for this winter, so we should be good there, we hope. And that's basically all I got under street unless you have anything for me.
Okay. Water and fire?
Don't go anywhere.
Oh, I haven't moved. We're still working on exercising the valves and I believe we've got the majority of high winds flushed for the year. I did attend the Whitewater Valley Regional Planning Meeting on October the 5th, so we will qualify for any SRF money we want for another year. I will try to get back on the schedule to attend the quarterly meetings they have, but I had some conflicts. So I attended the last one to make sure we still stayed qualified for the SRF. I believe that's all I got underwater unless you have anything for me.
Dennis?
We did have a collection for food and funds out at Walmart this past Saturday. You want to give an idea on what we got out there? Kevin and a couple of other guys was taking care of it. So. Along with that, this week is Fire Prevention Week, so several of the firefighters are working with the school to put on programs for their classes. And then we will, one day this week, we usually don't announce it, but we will be doing the multi-fire drill there. We're required by law to have participate in one fire drill a year. So that's what we usually do for Fire Prevention Week is do that one, so.
So I can't find it, but roughly it was around $600, I remember writing cash, and then probably a couple hundred dollars in food, so.
So that's all I got.
Dennis, just a second here. You might mention we're getting into the season where wood burning is going to probably start taking effect in their heat stoves. And definitely check your smoke detectors.
Check smoke detectors. Be sure to get your flues checked before you start burning. Now would be a good time to get that done. Because, you know, if it's built up over the summer or bird nest and whatever, will cause that to come back into your house and, and that's not good, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I broke out on mine because I didn't ready to turn off all my heat. I use a space heater, so try not to use those, especially when you leave the house and don't use them on extension cord. Try to be safe with that. I do believe that there's still a program where if they need smoke detectors, they can get hold of you, correct?
If you need a smoke detector, we have a couple of sources that we can get you some.
They'd much rather visit your house on a visit to put in one in than a visit to shut one off and put a fire out. So thanks for what you guys do down there as well. I think that'll be it unless anybody else.
Okay. Waste water, storm water? Wastewater, stormwater?
Well, one of our chlorine pumps went out down at the wastewater plant. And I'm going to ask for your permission to order a $6,000 chlorine pump so we'll be able to treat.
I would entertain a motion on his request.
We don't have a choice, so yes.
You made a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion by Gary and a second by Josh? We call the roll, please.
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonderson?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, and in our sewer line inspection, we found an issue down on McMen Road. Some tree roots had drew through. And which, as many of you know, that's an older line, which is a clay tile, which has been destroyed by the tree roots. So I do have a company scheduled to be in here late this week or the first of next. We're going to reline what we have there rather than tearing up the new blacktop and replace it.
Thank you.
It wasn't my plan.
I was just bragging on that street too.
Well, it's going to stay the same way. We're going to run from manhole to manhole and coat the inside and stuff. But so we'll get back together. Shane Banks did pass his wastewater operator one class. So we have a certified one now along with Don who's a certified three. Soon as Shane gets his time in, he will move on to the class two and then the class three. It's a matter of meeting the timeline to work him right in on the lab. And basically, that's all I got under wastewater, water and stormwater.
What about the chain project?
Um, we're still waiting for the chain to arrive. It is scheduled to be installed as soon as it arrives.
It's like a chain.
Yeah. Corny joke. Is there like issue with weather? They can do that if things turn or?
More deep enough, we can, that can be done in anyway.
Anything else?
I'd like for you to tell Shane congratulations. That's a, that's a tough test. Tough test.
A lot of chemistry.
Lot of, lot of figuring and numbers and good for him. That's all.
Electric?
Well, IMPA is slowly working on starting the Mattie Harris project. I believe all the materials are on the ground in the state of Indiana. We have most of it out at PD in the garage along with IMPA's strong unit. Rest of it is on the ground. In between emergencies, they will be starting on that. We hope to have that done by the middle of December at the latest, if everything cooperates. We did, they did underlay our lines from Duke Substation last week. We did get into Duke's lines and have an article due, but no one was hurt thankfully. Didn't get that corrected. Duke was notified and come down and inspected and we're good to go there. And I believe that's all I got under electric unless you have anything.
I don't believe so.
The charging station is starting to show some increase in the past couple of months. That's a plus for us. Thank you.
Kirk, you got any?
Oh, no.
No. Let me make these announcements. Trick or treat will be October 31st. And that will be from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And our council meeting will be, and public hearing will be on Monday, October 30th, 2023, at 7:00 PM here in the council room. And then we will have a work session on Monday, October... Well, that is the work session, I'm sorry. The office will, is closed for Veterans Day on Friday, November the 11th. And then Christmas in Centerville will be on December the 2nd. And that will be from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the Centerville Town Council meeting for October the 10th, 2023. So moved. I have a motion by Josh. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by David. Will you call the roll, please?
David Kate?
Aye.
Josh Tudor?
Aye.
Jack Bonneker?
Aye.
Gary Holbert?
Aye.
Dan Wonderson?
Aye.
Motion carried. We thank you for coming and it is 7:35.